The very first one, which is 748, that is a request from George Highland for flags for the Memorial Day event with Fleet Reserve Association to place flags at the Colonel Ledger Cemetery. And with that, I'll turn it over to you. George, are you on the, are you on the line?
He's down there.
Oh, you're on, okay. George, you're on the computer? Can you hear us?
I think so.
George, are you still muted? Thank you. George, can you hear us?
I can barely hear you, Mayor.
Okay, then I'll speak louder, which is usually not a problem. Okay. I have basically introduced you and your request. Would you like to talk some more about the request?
Sure. Branch 20 of the Fleet Reserve Association on Thames Street in the city, well, more than 20 years, has placed flags on the graves of veterans, mainly in Colonel Ledger Cemetery. And then we wound up several years ago also doing Star Hill up on West of Town Road. This year, we placed a total of 702 flags, with 297 in Star Hill and 405 in Colonel Ledger.
Okay. And your, and your request is for how much?
$300.
$300, okay. Are there any questions from the council? Councilor Ortiz, I am sorry. No, no, I, I do know who you are. I, I am so sorry, I spaced.
So, pardon my ignorance on this subject, but two questions.
Okay.
Ledger Cemetery is ours?
It's in the city of Groton. It's near Cumberland Farms. It's on the, as you're going toward Five Corners, the cemetery's on the left-hand side.
Two things, I mean, one more thing. Do we put them meaning to stay there for, in respect of the person that's, you know, that's in the lot? Or is it for takeaway for families or can we pick them up?
George, on the flags that are displayed at the cemetery, is the intent to leave them there until they get discolored and then returned? Or do they-
I'm sorry, I couldn't understand you, Mayor.
Okay. The flags that are placed on the, on the graves, is the intent to leave them there until they need to be replaced? Or are they picked up by the family or for some other reason, some other use with the flags?
Yes, typically, we leave them there. And any flags that we have left over from the yearly purchase, when we see damaged flags, we pick them up and replace them if we can.
Okay, does that answer your question? Hey, councilors, any other questions for George? Okay, with none, not with hearing none, I want to need a motion to move this to the Mayor and Council meeting of eight three, 2020.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, George. We're done, you can log off.
Thank you, and thank you to the City Council for letting me speak to you tonight.
Okay, the next one, deadline, I apologize because I did not share with you my order. Uh, number two is Department Presentations, MS4. That's number 655. Heidi, if you could, are we gonna do the microphone so Heidi can be picked up? Alright, so we'll get a new stand. Before you start, how many councilors are not familiar with- How many councilors have, are not familiar with Heidi Komot? Anybody here doesn't know her? Okay, here's one, two, three, so the new councilors. So, and here's my second question. How many of you are unfamiliar with MS4? The stormwater drain program that we have here in the city? Okay? So that gives us an idea. So with that, if you could introduce yourself since there are people that don't know you.
That's fine.
And, and then go into the MS4 program. Thank you, Heidi.
No, thank you for having me. The mayor and I had talked probably a couple of months ago at this point about me coming and just kind of talking to you a little bit about what stormwater is, what MS4 is, what the permit requires us to do. And unfortunately, then COVID happened and I thought it, I'm one of those people that would much prefer doing this face-to-face rather than over the phone or trying to Skype. So, thank you for being so patient. One of the things that I believe is, was in your packets, I provided a copy of our 2019 annual report. That provides basically all the detail of what's, what's gone into the permit since its inception in 2017. I could bore you and go line by line, but one of the things that I, what I wanted to do is I wanted to kind of give you a little bit of a bullet of what the permit actually is, what it requires us to do, and then just talk a little bit about some of the things that we've been focusing on over the last year. So the, the stormwater permit or the MS4 permit is a, it's mandated by state statute in Connecticut. The permit regulates discharge of stormwater within cities and towns that discharge to impaired waters. The city is actually bounded by four impaired water bodies, the Thames River, Fisher's Island Sound, Bakers Cove, and Birch Plain Creek. Most of those are impaired by bacteria. That is probably the, the largest pollutant of concern. So what we're required to do, the city actually has 24 outfalls that are, which means the water makes its way directly to one of those water bodies. So we are required to test all of those. Based on the information that we get back from those tests, we then will take steps necessary if we have to, to then do an investigation of what that, what that impairment might be, where it may have come from, and then try to, you know, come up with some solutions to change that. I will tell you that one of the things that we are finding is bacteria is, is certainly a concern here in this area. I'm sure that Director Gade could probably talk to the, talk to that a little bit as well with the folks over at the lab and the water shop. A lot of that comes from fecal matter, which is our geese, our pet waste, you know, rotting leaves and those types of things. So that is something that we do try to pay attention to. I've only been in this position for a little bit over a year now, so I am kind of getting my feet wet and trying to get caught up on getting the, getting the testing going. So far, out of the 24 outfalls, we have tested 12 of them. Out of those 12, eight of them have come back with levels that, that exceed the threshold for bacteria. So, you know, those are things that we are, that we are looking at, we are working on, and we are continuing to do investigations on that. So outside of, of testing our outfalls, we do try to focus a little bit on public outreach and education. One of the things that I did put at each of your places this evening was a brochure. You know, it's kind of a visual. If, you know, you take your dog out and you're not a responsible pet owner, that eventually makes its way to, to one of our waterways. You know, something else that, that folks, I don't think, think about all the time is when you work on your vehicle in your driveway and it rains that evening, anything that may have fallen to your driveway has now made its way potentially to one of our catch basins and, and out to one of the water bodies. You know, so those are things that we do pay attention to. Our folks that do go out and inspect our catch basins are also looking for if folks are blowing their grass clippings into the basins. You know, again, just these silly little things, you don't think about that, that, that sits in the basin, it decays and that creates bacteria, which again, will make its way to, to our water bodies. So, so we have focused quite a bit this, this year on public education. We had a table at City Day. We've used social media. The mayor was kind enough to participate in our National Public Works Week video where he talked a bit about, about MS4 and, and what it means to the city. We've worked with a couple of local Girl Scout troops, just trying to get some, some information out like, like you see in these brochures, just these, you know, these gentle reminders of things to pay attention to. So that's, that's kind of been one of our focuses for, for this past year. Outside of the city's MS4 permit, our highway garage yard is also part of an industrial permit, which we are required to do monthly inspections of the yard, of the equipment, make sure that everything is, is in good working order, there aren't any leaks that are making their way to the basins that are out, out in the highway garage. Because we have the salt shed, we also have to ensure that all of that is contained and that, again, it's not making its way to, to our basins and our waterways. So the other, one of the last things that I kind of wanted to talk a little bit about is, so our focus for this current permit year, and I also included, I believe, a, it's a timeline for the five years of the permit and sort of a checklist of what we're attempting to, to meet at the end of each of those, those permit years. So we have, we are focusing this year on low-impact development. It was a conversation that we had started with, with our previous city planner, because it is going to require policy and regulation. What we're hoping to be able to do is we're hoping to be able to get to these developers, the designers, and have conversations with them while they're still in that design phase, and, and hoping that they can incorporate different types of, of design that will, I guess for all intents and purposes, maintain the stormwater on their property. You know, we talk about impervious cover. Impervious cover is, is concrete, it's asphalt. You know, if you drive, drive down into the Five Corners area, when there's a heavy rain, that water sheets directly down the Quonic Road and John Street onto, onto Thames Street. So those are the things that we're looking at doing, different types of projects to, to minimize some of that. We have been working with the Eastern Connecticut Conservation District, and we're looking at putting in some rain gardens here in the city. And if we find the right locations, that, again, anywhere where we can help slow the flow of, of water into our basins and into our stormwater system benefits everyone at the end of the day. So that's kind of an overview of some of the things that, that we've been working on and what stormwater is.
So when you get into stormwater, there's a couple of different kinds of runoff. There's point source and non-point source pollution. Point source pollution is basically you can tie it back to the source, for example, if someone's, so if someone's washing their car, we'd rather them wash their car in their yard, so the water goes into the substrate and gets filtered that way, as opposed to running down the road and then going into the, the drains, stormwater drains, right? You may, we have quite a bit of construction going on, our residential construction, and when you drive by some of these construction sites, you will see straw bales and those cotton socks, these, these orange sock looking, they call them socks, but, but they're, they are, they're basically a filter, and they are to, to maintain any debris on the construction site so it doesn't get out into, into the catch basins and, and therefore down, down into the issuers. Another challenge that we have is leaves and grass. There are people that actually put clippings, you wouldn't think so, but they do, put clippings in the stormwater drains. And a stormwater drain is problematic in two ways. Heidi mentioned the one, which is the biologics. But the other way is when grass is heaping with nitrogen. So now you put nitrogen sources into the water and that deprives the oxygen sources from the water, and that negatively impacts not just water quality, but also the ecosystem with the fish and crabs and everything else that we have. So there's, there's a lot to this, but I, and we could go on forever because I love this subject, but I've asked Heidi just to come in and give you a very high level so that you know what we're doing. We also, when you get permits to, to build and things like that, there's a large section on stormwater drains and impervious surfaces. One of the things we, we know is that in the city of Groton, we have more impervious surfaces than Hartford is comfortable with. So one of the things we're trying to figure out is how do you change those impervious surfaces into maybe rain gardens or tree filters? We have a couple examples out in the front, you may have missed, you may not have seen them, but we have some tree filters naturally so that the water collects there and is filtered through the tree basins there. We're looking to expand that throughout the city and to help clean up the environment. So it's all part of a, of a big picture, and that's it. So any questions or comments for Heidi?
Do a question. What's the timeline to test all of the outfalls?
So based on the permit, we were required to have all out, or excuse me, have 50% of the outfalls tested by June 30th of this year. We fell short by two outfalls. Unfortunately, the, the weather did not cooperate. So in terms of testing, you have to have a flow that, or a rainfall that will provide flow through the pipe, but you can't have had a rainfall within the previous 48 hours of that, of that rain event. So timing it out this spring was a little difficult, so we did fall short by, by two outfalls.
Any other questions or comments for Heidi? Okay. This was information only, there's no action for the council, and there'll be no action at the next Mayor Council meeting. Heidi, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next is 773, which is Parks and Rec. Mary? We have four items under this, three are memorial benches and one is goose control, which directly relates to the MS4. And, but this is under 774. Mary, I'll let you-
773.
I'm sorry, 773, thank you.
So do you want to do the memorial benches first?
Sure.
Because, alright. So we, the Beach and Parks Committee, their last meeting received three requests for memorial benches at the beach. The letters were read to the, the members of the committee and their recommendation was that all three be approved by the council in regards to placement of a memorial bench. This would bring our memorial bench count to 30, between the beach and Griswold Point.
And, and you, the council, you've been down to the beach, you've seen these, you've seen them down at Griswold Point, and this is a way to commemorate, to commemorate and or memorialize a loved one, and we have three new benches here. Any questions for Mary?
Aye.
Counselor McKay?
Thank you. How much space do we have, like how many total benches?
I'm gonna have to do inventory. I think we have room, after these three are put in, I believe we might have room for another five. I'm gonna take an overview of the, of the parcel of, of the beach and kind of map out where the existing ones are and where these three are gonna go. And then kind of work our way from there to how many more we can put in. In our memorial resolution, we go, we have the opportunity to do stones also, like around the flagpole. Make a stone path and lead it up to the stairwell and, or the sidewalk to the stairwell of the Tyler House.
I was gonna ask that next. What would be our next step?
I think that's our next step, maybe getting that laid out so we know how many stones we have, if we want to go every one or every other one, we have a plan in place and then we can just pull those as we go. We have, we still have quite, probably room for another four or five down at Griswold Point if people want them down there also. We, we don't have any in the park, and it's also-
I was gonna say, could we expand into Washington Park?
You know, it doesn't have the view of the water, but we do have the park too for people to have their benches.
Counselor Depot.
That's exactly what I was gonna say. I was wondering if, because I think that everyone knows that we have them at the beach, so I don't know that someone would think to apply for, to have one at the park, but I would imagine people who, for example, have coached Little Eagle or something like that, they might be interested in having one at the park instead.
Absolutely. And another thing that we're doing is we're trying, we're actively, not trying, we're actively maintaining the Birch Plain Creek walk area, and that might be nice. There are a couple places down there that benches might be worthwhile down there, so. Counselor Depot.
In relation to that, I was gonna say, I know that people who have memorial benches tend to visit wherever that place is a lot, so if we had, for example, Birch Plain Creek that isn't as well-known, but if someone wanted to put one there, it might make more foot traffic, which, which would maybe make it more traveled, which was kind of the problem before, it got a little in disrepair because no one was going there.
Right.
So that might be a good idea.
We also do trees too. We have memorial, you can do a memorial tree if you'd like to, with a plaque at the base of the tree. We have a few out front and we have one, one, one at the beach. Yeah.
Alright. So, Court Patrick, can I, can we move all three of these? Actually, what I'd like to do is talk about the last one, they just move all four to the next meeting, right? Because just to get, or do they have to be as separate?
They all have a resolution.
Yes, they all have, each bench has a resolution for it.
Yeah, but, but we're not approving the resolutions. All we're doing is we're moving the resolutions to the next council meeting. I know what we've done in the past, I'm just wondering if, if we have to stick to that in terms of way that, I mean, is, is it, your preference is to move each one?
Well, we've always done it that way, but I don't think that it would be improper to move them as one grouping, as long as when you're moving it, each thing is, is mentioned in the motion.
Oh, heck, in that case, then I'll move them separate. Need a motion to move the memorial bench for Robert Van Biffen to the Mayor Council meeting of eight three, 2020.
Solo, second.
The motion is second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Need a motion to move the memorial bench for Sandra Stresshopper Rubitai?
So move.
Second.
The motion is second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Need a motion to move the memorial bench for Barbara Ann Murray Fruch to the County Mayor Council meeting of eight three, 2020.
Solo, second.
The motion is second, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Abstention? I'm sorry. Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Okay, Mary, Honkers?
So the next item is our, our contract with Honkers, which is the company we contract out to, for a year contract, to get, keep the geese off Eastern Point Beach and Washington Park. It's a border collie-driven program where the border collie herds the geese and gets them off the property, herds them out of the water, whatever necessary means, so that we don't have the bacteria that Heidi was talking about getting into our waterways and to, and at the beach. This will be their 21st year with us. I did reach out and get prices from the only other company in the state of Connecticut, which is out of Greenwich, Connecticut, and they're roughly $90 more a week than Honkers was, was, is. So I am coming forward today to see, to renew their contract for the year.
And, and they weren't as flexible, if I remember right, right?
Correct. Their closest substation is Branford, so we all know Branford's about an hour away. If we have geese in the water, like last Friday, we had them in the swim area, there's about 14 of them at 7:30. Our person was there with, before 8 o'clock to get them out of the, herd them out of the water. So flexibility, she's in Waterford, Honkers is in Waterford, Branford and Greenwich are quite a distance, so.
So, so what this collie does is the collie basically harasses the geese and then they leave and they go somewhere else. And they eventually come back and, you know, but we have them all over the place. I've talked to the DEP about this, and the DEP, if you don't do it this way, then they're basically saying you gotta get rid of the geese, which means you get rid of the geese. And I'm not ready to do that. I'll still work with harassing the geese and getting them to move and those kind of things. The, I don't know, you, you guys are familiar with, council rather, is familiar with Baker Cove. One of the things right now is, is that clamming in Baker Cove is not allowed because of high fecal chloroform. And one of the things that this, not commission, but this, this group of people we're working with, that has the DEP and Heidi's on it and, and other people are on this, is to try to reduce the fecal chloroform so that eventually we can get clamming again back in Baker Cove. Now, that's a long-term project, but, but getting the geese to go somewhere else is part of that.
We do have three individual flocks of geese that migrate towards the beach. If they're not at the beach, they're at E V Point. If they're not at E V Point, they're at the golf course, they kind of stay, and they go as north as E V, Pfizer.
Right.
It's to the point now where the vehicle drives into the beach and the geese fly away. The, the dog doesn't have to get out of the car.
I'm sorry.
I just wanted to add a comment. So I'm familiar with a, a business nearby who, they, I think they worked with Honkers, and they had them for a couple of years and they got rid of them, and there was a noticeable difference with the, the geese fecal matter. So it seems kind of weird, but it seems to work.
Yeah, it does.
Well, this, this border collie's pretty impressive because there was a woman, I was down at the beach, there was a woman out running this dog free. So I said, okay, I'm gonna go tell her, you can't let your dog run on the beach. So I go up there and I said, hey, I don't know if you know this, but you need to have a dog on a leash and you can't let it run free. She says, well, I don't know if you know, but I work for you. Well, you know what, you don't have a badge. I said, no, I do not know.
She has one now.
And so as I'm talking to her, that collie is circling me and herding me. And I'm like, whoa, this is pretty cool. A little creepy, but nonetheless. So this does work. So with, any other questions for Mary on this? Counselor Ortiz?
Mary, does it work with the seagulls as well?
No, just with the geese.
Here's what works for the seagulls, and you need to train people.
Not to feed them.
If we could train people, then the seagulls won't be a problem. The seagulls aren't a problem down at the beach this year because we don't have a concession stand. It's not about the concession stand, it's about people feeding the seagulls. Oh, they're so cute, cut it out! They're rats with wings. Don't feed the seagulls. Right? That's, that's what we need to do. Alright, any other questions or comments for Mary? Alright, I'll take a motion to move Honkers Goose Control, Goose Control rather, to the Mayor Council meeting of eight three, 2020.
Solo, second.
The motion is second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Alright, the next thing is gonna be-
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you, Mary. The, oh, I also want to thank you for Friday night. For those of you that aren't aware, we had a concert in the park hosted by Dan Boggs with the Groton Utilities and Mary with Parks and Rec. And Mary has squares out there that's painted, people were in every other square. We had run out of paint, so we were, we, Mary had basically a concierge service to walk people, you could sit here and knew where to go, we took them, and it was a great concert, and we had social distancing, and everybody had a great time. So that's great news. Alright, the next thing is 758, Police Nuclear Safety Emergency Program. Chief?
The Nuclear Safety Berp Two Program, or HEP, is on the ability of the municipality within the Blue Zone from Millstone to have availability and to grant funding so that you can get items that you need in the event that there's a nuclear emergency. We aggressively anticipate in the program and we've gotten some equipment for police and fire for the years. For you today, we're seeking funding from them at no taxpayer expense to people in the city of Groton. It will allow us to continue to modernize our computer capabilities and our capability to dispatch as we go to the state police radio system. We have had drills within the city of Groton in recent years, and we, we actually scored 100 the last time that it came through. It worked very, very well. And the chairs you sit in, we got to do that instantly. So it's a, it's a, it's a very good program, and it, and it allows us to get things that ordinarily are more, are their needs, but in the big scheme of things, they quickly become lots. And, but it allows us to modernize equipment against what we're looking for.
Any questions for Chief? Counselor De- Any questions for Chief? Councilor Depot?
Uh, less of a question, but more of a comment. And I probably comment this every time you come in front of us, but especially with all of the talk about police departments these days, I know that I've spoken with people whose police departments aren't so active in getting funding for things, um, and making, finding a way so that taxpayers don't have to pay for all the advantages that we have, like body cameras and sometimes new firearms and stuff like that. So I just wanna, again, thank you for being so active and involved in it because it really does make a, a huge difference. And we appreciate our chairs.
Any other questions or comments for Chief? Hearing none. I'd have a motion to move Nuclear Safety Emergency Program to the mayor and council meeting of eight, three, twenty twenty.
So move. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
And Chief Tompkins, you still on the phone? Chief, did I lose you?
Are you on mute?
Uh, no. No. I can say that to him. Chief, you still there? Alright. Let me turn it up a little bit. Alright, so the next thing I want to talk about is seven seventy-five, which is a fire department transmission repair. This is an emergent repair that, uh, just came up very recently, last week. So, Chief, if you could walk us through that?
Okay, um, I believe I sent out, you should have had in your package, there's a estimate from shipments of fire equipment. We've been using them lately for our truck repair. They've been, uh, they've been great and very reactive for us. Um, so, we had a noise in the rear end. It's actually the rear end. It's not, not necessarily the transmission as you would think of it. But there's two axles in the rear of that truck because it's so heavy. And the forward of those two, um, had a clunk in it. They came and looked at it. They found metal shavings in the oil. So, the fix is to change what they call the pumpkin, uh, the middle part of that axle. And, um, and so they ordered parts. We really need to get it done. They, there's no way of knowing exactly what's wrong. They said it, you know, could last two minutes, it could last two years. But the problem is that if it catastrophically fails, then, um, you know, it takes out more. It can take out the axle tips and you get into a much more expensive, um, repair. And, and so, for a truck this size, twelve thousand dollars, of course, is a lot of money, but, um, you know, the bills get, get large very quickly when the, when the truck's worth a million and a half dollars. I do have the money in my current fiscal year twenty-one budget for truck repair. I do have a, a, a budget, uh, line item, and we will take the money out of that.
Okay, any questions or comments for Chief? Hearing none. I need a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of eight, three, twenty twenty.
So move. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna hang up if you don't hang up. I got you. Sorry. Alright, the numbers. The next thing we're gonna do, one, two, three, four, five, six, is Grind Utilities Financials, number five sixty-one.
So, in your packet, you have the June, um, financials for Grind Utilities, which these are preliminary as the, um, we're still receiving invoices for the previous year that are coming through with the AP process. So, these aren't final June thirty numbers, but it's snapshot as of this point, um, with that, but they will change again based on invoices still coming in for expenditures. So, if we flip to page three, we'll start with the electric division.
This is for June or July?
For June.
Okay, sorry.
For June thirty.
June, page thirty?
Yep. So, this kind of gives you the year-to-date. From the revenue standpoint, those numbers are pretty much set. Won't be much changed there, but it's on the expenditure side where we'll see some, um, additional expenses coming through. So, we look at page nineteen, the total electric revenue was budgeted forty-seven point eight million and it came at just over forty-seven million or seven hundred and fifty-four thousand under budget. As you can see, looking through, um, the different classes, the commercial class was the, the big shortfall, missing the budget by eight hundred and thirty-three thousand. And again, that was just due to, uh, one, we have COVID now, which had hit the commercial class. You can see month-to-date. In the previous page, on page two, was a hundred and fifty thousand below budget just for that month alone. Also, we had a mild summer, fall last year, and then the same with the winter. So you didn't have the AC and the heat piece of it. So from, that was the revenue shortfall. With that, if you go down to line forty-one, which is the total operating expenses, budget is fifty-one point six million and currently expenditures year-to-date was fifty point four million or a hundred and, just about, just under one point two million, um, below budget. And again, you, what you'll see there is you'll see that the purchase power, because the revenues are down, we buy less power. So you'll see that the, um, purchase power is below budget by seven hundred and thirty-four thousand. So you can see the offset of that. Bring us to line fifty-two, which is an income from operations, uh, budgeted three point three million and currently it's at four point two million or just under a million on, under budget, or over budget from the, the income side. So, overall, it still, even though we were short on the revenue side, it was made up with this coming in under budget on the expenditure side. And again, that, that's gonna change a little bit, but I don't see anything ginormous, um, hitting there. You know, all the purchase power bills are incorporated in here and those types of things. So, that's the overview of electric.
Just, just real quick, just to catch you up, um, one of the things we're interested in right now is accounts receivable because with the governor's, uh, governor's orders, there, the town elected to defer tax payments and then therefore, uh, private utilities, investor-owned utilities I will use, and public utilities, this utility also is, we're not turning off power. So there, our accounts receivable, we're around eight percent on the accounts receivable. We've done pretty good on the accounts receivable. We're just a couple of percentages, percentage points higher, uh, than we normally would be. We're going to be following this. There's a potential that, uh, let's see, what are we talking about? September. And we're, we're already calling people. We're talking to them about getting a payment plan set up to pay anything because eventually the bill's gonna come due and you gotta pay it. Uh, but we are working with people and I just want to talk to you real quick about the accounts receivable. And that's mostly impacts electric. I mean, there's some water in sewers as well, but the electric is what most people are chasing. If you look at, uh, North Public Utilities, their accounts receivable's around eighteen percent. And, uh, it's impacted them. So, we're very fortunate so far. I'll, I'll turn it back over to you.
So, we'll move on to water, which will be page eight. And as you can see, water is, um, from the revenue standpoint, we'll look at line seventeen, the budget is just under ten point six, with the actual coming in at just over ten point seven or a hundred and fifty-one thousand over budget from the revenue side. Line thirty, total operating expenses, um, the budget was ten point seven and actual is nine point six, currently are just over a million under budget from the expense side. Which brings us down to line forty-four, the net earnings before the drinking water state revolving fund grant. We came in, the actual is nine hundred and sixty-one thousand, um, to the positive where we actually had budgeted a negative one point three million. So it's two, two point, just under two point two million above budget from the, the net income. So you see the revenues came in just over budget, one point four percent over, um, the budget amount and the expenditures are below budget. So it's just, the expense side the same as electric, but the, the revenue side does have a different story with the water compared to budget. So this is an overview of the water.
Any questions online? And we'll move to sewer.
And if we flip to page thirteen? We'll start, and again, this one has, uh, this follows with the water based on the usage. So sewer, follow sewer for the city residents. So the total sewer revenue budget was three, just under three point nine million and actually came in at four point six million or seven hundred and thirty-two thousand above budget from the revenue side. Line twenty-six, the total operating expenses, the budget was just over three million. It came in at just under two point six actual or four hundred and eighty thousand under budget from the expenditures, which then we go down to line thirty-seven, which is a net income from operations, budgeted just under six hundred thousand and came in at one point eight million or one point two over budget from the, from the net income. So, from the sewer, the sewer department had a really good year from the revenue side as far as what was budgeted to what was actually billed. So that's the overview of the sewer.
Any questions on sewer?
May.
I'm, I'm sorry. Uh, Councilor Depot?
It's less of a question about the sewer, but, um, so this is the end of the fiscal year, right?
Correct.
Um, can you remind me the timeline for the financials and when that gets wrapped up and when we get the report for the fiscal year that just ended?
The actual CAFR, the audit report or?
Yeah.
That, that's what comes out towards the end of the year, usually December, January. Last year, I think we, they brought, we got it in February, but presented it in the February COW or the March COW. I don't remember offhand. Um, but that's the actual audit financial statements when we receive those, which some, is the final numbers for the fiscal year.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions or comments around? Alright, we're done with that. The next one will go to seven forty-two, which is Grind Utilities Change Order Number Seventeen.
Uh, for the filtration plant, this is the seventeenth change order. This change order is, has myriad of, uh, small changes, um, that, um, like the first one is the relocation of some mechanical, uh, equipment that costs twelve thousand, uh, all the way to, um, the changing of some water meters, uh, which was a credit of five thousand. So, uh, they take all these small pluses and minuses, package them all together and made a change order to equal forty-six thousand, um, all non-PCB related. Um, and, uh, this will be approved by the state and after the state approves it, uh, we would also approve it pending your approval. You go first. At this point, you go first and we do it pending state's approval.
Any questions for Court Patrick? So, when does, when is the project open?
Uh, the current completion date, uh, from the change orders that have been through the project, I believe it's January, it's either ten, eleven, twelve, or thirteen.
Okay, so I want to draw your attention to the spreadsheet, I think that was included with your packet?
I believe so.
On the second page, the next to the last number is actual remaining contingency right now is seven hundred and forty thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars and forty-five cents. The potential remaining contingency because of, of potential change orders puts us down to four hundred and thirty-four thousand, nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars and forty-one cents. So I just wanted to make you aware of where we are on, excuse me, on contingency. The, we were originally supposed to start to end when? End date was supposed to be in the summer, right?
It was September tenth.
So now, we've moved from September to January. We are in the middle of testing, uh, the DAF of the procreation units. And then once that's done, we will be, uh, changing out the sand beds. We have sand and charcoal filter. We're going to a granulate, uh, to a GAC, which is granulated activated charcoal, but it's like a six-foot deep bed of charcoal, which is, uh, actually better than sand because not only is it mechanically filtered, but it also organically removes, uh, components in the water, chemicals out of the water. And so, we'll be testing that. That, that's next, right? The next thing?
Right. Currently, we, uh, last Friday, we submitted a package, uh, to the DEP and asked to flow water from the new DAFs to the water system. And we're expecting that approval the first week of August.
This is the startup period where they're working the Kings out. They're making sure that the system works like it's supposed to. This is under, so right now, the, the filtration plant is still owned by, uh, RH White. They have not turned it over to us yet for, for operability. There will be a period where we will be, uh, shadowing them and working with the plant and those kind of things before complete term. Alright, so, any other questions for the director? Councilor Sanford?
Has COVID nineteen caused the delay? Or, except we didn't have COVID nineteen, would have, we have been on schedule to have?
Um, several of the delays were caused to winter weather. And then there was another change, uh, due to PCB work that was being completed.
Okay.
So, the answer is no?
No.
Oh, sorry.
Nope, that's okay. I mean, you provided an additional explanation, but, but it wasn't easy. It wasn't that COVID related.
May, I just, I just wanna, I just wanna clarify one more, one more thing. This, this dollar amount is coming out of the potential remaining contingency, correct? That hasn't been taken out?
This, this change order, the, the spreadsheet, does this reflects, you think it reflects the change order that's out? This is change order seventeen?
Normally, Ray has all the change orders in there. If you look on the very first page, it says PCO nine, eleven, seventeen, and eighteen.
Yep.
Okay.
And then down the bottom, it says change orders number seventeen.
Yep.
Forty-six thousand. That's it, right there.
So if you look on the first page, the very bottom entry, that's not true. The, the, the-
Yes, near the end.
The bottom entry on the left-hand side, the column A, uh, shows the forty-six thousand dollars. And then the very final entry on the first page is a seven four nine one zero point four five, which correlates to the seven four zero nine one zero point four five on the second page for maintenance.
Thank you.
So, does that?
That does answer my question.
Right. The, the first page are ones that have been completed and renegotiated by Stan Tech. The second page is possible ones that could surface or are being negotiated in some form.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments for the director? Hearing none. I need a motion to move this to the mayor and council meeting of eight, three, two thousand twenty.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Number seven, number, Chief, number, uh, the next one is seven seventy-four bonding. We're gonna talk about Grind Utilities Transmission Lines, laser light and power, and then I'm gonna remind you of the repurposing of the tunnel ledger bond. And we'll start out with the director. This is informing all of you.
First, you have transmission?
Trans, Grind Utilities Transmission Line is the first one. That's correct.
Okay. Um, in your package, um, well, first, a little bit of background. Back about six weeks ago, we brought, uh, an MOU through council. And the MOU was an agreement that we went into with Eversource to, um, join, join an alliance with them and basically use their engineering firms in doing the transmission updates to, to help use their contractors, work with them so that it would help us cost less money. So you saw that several weeks back. Um, this is actually the project that's gonna cost fifty, that has an estimated maximum of fifteen point two million that is related to that MOU. So, I put a, um, Randy, um, and some of the guys put together this presentation and it explains- So I put a, Randy and some of the guys put together this presentation and it explains what the bonding is going to pay for. As you know, Buddington is our large substation and the voltages, I'm going to go to page two of the presentation, the voltages coming into Buddington are 115,000 volts and 69,000 volts. The transmission upgrade is actually going to upgrade the 115,000 volt lines, the towers that hold those wires. If you drive by BJ's, you'll notice that they're, they're replacing all those giant towers that have the lines from Millstone going on it. We have towers a little bit smaller, but very similar at 115,000 volts coming into Buddington. Those towers are going to be replaced and the wires are going to be replaced. Additionally, we have three lines that come in there, two are at 115,000 volts. The third line that comes in there is at 69,000 volts. The ISO New England wants us to upgrade that at the same time to 115,000 volts along with all the wires and all the towers that bring that line in. So that is currently starting to be designed. So two of the three parts of this project, upgrade the incoming 115,000 volt and upgrade the incoming 69,000 volt. The third part of the project upgrades what basically all those wires plug into at the substation. So they plug in, they come in through switches and then you end up going through transformers that bring it down to our subtransmission voltage, which is basically 35,000 volts. 35,000 volts feeds all of our large customers directly. So the third part of the project actually upgrades the facilities in the substation to be able to accept the new lines and actually the new control structure that we're being required to update to, which is basically fiber-based. Fibers carry down these lines. So the total estimate, estimated maximum of the project's 15.2 million. The preliminary schedule is on page three, where the work is starting right now and it's estimated to go over the next couple of years. You can interrupt me if you have a question at any time, please.
Councilor Debo.
I would just, from what you're saying, if I'm, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding correctly. So the impetus for this project is the industry standard has changed, so we are upgrading to meet the industry standard?
Right. We actually own that last 1.7 miles in, into the facility. However, the ISO New England actually tells us how to run it and tells us when it has to be upgraded. And in a slide a few back, it shows that there's actually a return on investment that the ISO gives you for performing this work. The finance department's looked at it. Basically, when we spend this money, even after bonding, we will be making a return on the investment. The return on the investment is about eight to 10%. And the borrowing costs are going to be closer to two or three percent. Ron, just correct me if I, let me speak.
You guys actually have a, on slide seven.
Yes, so we just flipped ahead to slide seven, but the requirements that they impose upon the utility, actually, they put incentive for the utility to own such capital infrastructure. So it pays for itself. This is not that owning the plant in the city, in the plant in the town, all of our own facilities doesn't pay dividends for owning the utility back to the city. But owning this type of equipment actually gives financial returns directly back to the utility. So it's, it's rare to come and say, geez, we would do this based on the return on investment that the project has. This project, we would move ahead and recommend that we do it just based on the return of investment that is guaranteed by the transmission system of New England.
All right, I want to, Ed and Mayor Beckford, do you have a comment?
Yeah, just had a question. When, when is the deadline by the New England ISO?
To have it completed?
Correct.
Um, no one's asked me that directly. I believe they give us a deadline, but I'm not aware of it. I, I'll actually look into that.
Find it out, let me know. I'll send it out to the council.
Okay.
Appreciate that.
Ron, the other driver, do you think something, doing it with Eversource, sorry?
Right, we're, we're actually moving it ahead right now because doing it with Eversource, we actually get to use their, the synergy of using their engineering firm in the actual, their bids on the construction. We are not, we don't normally work on lines of this nature. So we don't have internal staff that can do the same work.
So there's a cost savings there by using that synergy as well?
Right.
Okay, so there are a lot of numbers, but go ahead, finish your presentation and...
So page three has the estimated schedule. Page four of the presentation actually is a very high-level description on how the transmission lines come and feed Buddington. If you actually look very, at the, almost the middle, slightly to the left, it says Buddington, CMEC, that is our feeds. The orange part of those wires, if you have color, I don't know if you have color, you didn't, are, are the 1.7 miles of line that we actually own. All the rest of the lines are owned by Eversource. The, the next page, page five, is just a picture of the Buddington substation. And you can see the part that's circled is the 400 line, which is bus one, which is the low voltage section. You'll notice that it looks older and it's a, it's not quite, lower voltage doesn't require the distance between the wires. So it's actually a little bit more compact. Page six describes the reasons that we have to do this. We, we had an illegal, a legal opinion done by a general counsel at CMEC and they said that, and actually provided us a letter of opinion that said, GU, just because we own those systems, is not in a position that where up, the upgrade is optional. So we don't have a choice. We, we would have a drop dead date at some point. The first reason being in that we have to keep up to current standards. The second being is that if we don't do the upgrade, we could put the ownership of the assets into jeopardy and they could just come in and take it away. And then they said, even if we were pushed back and not do it, we could put the whole franchise in jeopardy. But, you know, that, I don't think, we would not let ourselves get there. We would figure out how to get through this and get it done. But it does make sense, right, of course, to do the financing for this. The next page was actually led in group by finance. However, it does just depict that there is a financial return of over 8% ROI on this project. Additionally, by owning these facilities, anytime that the, that the utility spends upkeeping it or operating any of this equipment, we bill the ISO and they pay us back for that, that effort. So they actually pay us to run the facilities.
So you said there's a return in this, is that real money?
Yes.
Okay, so we will, we will see that as a revenue, line as revenue source?
Right.
Okay? So there are a lot of numbers here. What is the bond ask?
15.2.
But not to exceed.
Does it exceed what?
It's, it's going to be 15.2, whatever, we don't need, that's the estimate on the high side.
Understand.
So if we're not, the plan would not be to just go out and issue a 15.2 million dollar bond and anticipate that we're going to spend everything? It would be to probably do some short-term borrowings as this project is going until we get to that final number and then issue the bond, again, not to exceed the 15 point.
To, to pay us back?
To pay, to pay for the project, right?
Correct. So that's 15.2 million dollars worth of bond, okay, for this project? The reason I say that is because we have another project coming up, Bosser Light and Power. And then later on, we are going to come back to you with projects for electric, water, and sewer for other projects, and that's additional bonding that we're going to have. Now, when we get into this later, not because it doesn't apply now, but later, we're going to get into bonding ratios. When you have a utility, the bonding ratio limits and requirements aren't there, with the exception of sewer. Sewer still goes against the municipality. When you're looking at, so we have come to you before with municipal bonding and there's a ratio that we have to maintain. And, you know, we're well within that, but when it comes to bonding in a utility, it's about maintaining, so you break, you borrow money so that you can maintain your infrastructure and what we're always going to be shooting for, for now on, is maintain 50% or better. So that the, the value and the life of the, of the asset, either electric, water, sewer, does not get below 50%. It's always 50% or higher. So anything else? Councilor Debo.
I was just going to ask, so the project is going to take a couple of years to do. Are we expecting electrical outages during the time of the project?
No, not at all. Actually, one of the reasons it takes so long is that out of the three supply lines, they have to coordinate the upgrades so that they always keep two lines up. They're only allowed to take one down. Why? We have some big customers. We have a Navy base, we have electric boat, we have Pfizer, they all require power 24 hours a day. So part of the trick is always trying to make sure that two of those lines are online. They're going to upgrade, do the upgrades on the, the 115,000 volt feeds first and then the, the low voltage 69,000 upgrade will follow, as I believe. And they're coordinating the timing. Randy and Mark Fine in Operations are working with the ISO. There, there's a mandate that they always have us supplied with two lines.
Anything?
And on the side, there was discussion that they were in of doing away with that 69,000 volt feed to us and we've been lobbying as long as I've worked here, I've gone to the ISO once and CMEC helps lobby for us. We wanted to have three feeds due to the criticality of the customer base that we have. And by this, in, this all just happened in February and it was pretty much sprung on us. It was like, everybody cheered because having three brand-new transmission feeds to Buddington is great for the utility and great for the reliability of everybody that draws power off that source.
Anything else of your presentation?
No.
Any other questions or comments to the Director? Okay, then we'll move to the ground rules.
And the reason why we're bringing this to you is that this will need to eventually come to the council as a resolution and an ordinance and then also a agreement meeting. So we just kind of wanted to socialize it, make sure that it was out there so when we are capable of having, going to a agreement meeting if the council is supportive of the project, that we can keep them all kind of going and not wait until the executive order where we can have that meeting. So that's why we're proceeding these tonight.
Right now, bond council is, is, they're limited on what bonding they're approving at this point. There's certain criteria that they need to meet in order to do that. All right, let's go to VLP, on the bond line and power, what's the?
Bosser Light and Power, we have, basically, there's two slides. One says that the, the ask for the bonding is 4.7523. So it's just over 4.7 million. The second page of the presentation describes the nature of the projects, which is basically reconducting resiliency, substation, and facilities. And then I included the detailed sheet, which is the detailed projects that fall in those categories. We tried to put the name of the project also underneath the bullet, then made up the total. And the plan here is also, we're only going to bond what is actually spent. Do you want to comment?
Yeah, it'd be the same, as long as we're doing short-term, we have a project, we'll concur with this, with these for short-term until we're at a point, but most likely at the end, this will be fully bonded just because of the nature of the projects that are in there. And then just from, just as, I know a little bit of history from budgeting, Bosser's a lot tighter cash-wise, a lot smaller entity, and we've actually in the budget the last four years, including the 2021 budget, have put bonding in to help with that cash flow issue. We've been currently paying for everything out of the checkbook, which has been drawing down on the cash in Bosser. So this is really to help replenish that cash to get them at the recommended minimum cash of the 2.4 million, based on the cost of service. So that's the reason why we've decided to go ahead and bring Bosser to you as well at the same time.
Any questions on Bosser? Thank you, Ron. The last one is repurposing Colonel, what are your bonds? If you, what, this is what you have in your package was basically the, in the management committee of the whole, where we talked about our projects and just wanted to, just real quickly go through them again. So what we're going to repurpose the bond for, this is Colonel Ledger bonding that we already have, it's already been authorized by the Freeman. So this is not new bonding and this bonding is only for these projects. Now, one of these projects, we're going to be pulling out because we can pull you in. So the tower house windows is one of the things that we said we wanted to do. Tower house bathroom, office and hallway has been completed. So that's completed. We did that with money this year. We obligated that, so this will come off the bond. Municipal building, windows, doors, and landings, we have this municipal grant aid. We have this will grant aid money and we're going to bond some of this for the building, doors, windows, and landing. The next one is police dive locker as best as abatement, we talked about that. The fire department company, one repaving, and then the police locker rooms. And I think that's it. So those are the ones that when we go for, for bonding, it, again, it is not new bonding. We're not going to bond for something that's not on this list. The reason I'm going into that level of detail is because there are people out there that will try to turn this around and say, this is brand-new bonding and they're going to use bonding for something else and here's what they're going to try to do. The bonding is repurposing bonding, bond money that we already have, we already have this money. But because the Freeman voted and said, use it for Colonel Ledger, we need to get the Freeman's vote to allocate it for these projects. And so that was basically just, to catch you guys back up, get you refreshed. And that's it. Ron, anything, do you want to correct me?
No, that, that's exactly, and again, it's just the same thing, is to try to just keep these moving so when we do have the green light to go forward, we can.
And then the, the next thing, not the last thing, the next thing is the city budget presentation, is number 690.
And similar to the utilities, this is the snapshot of the expenditure side of the general fund, budget to actuals. These numbers will change, they're not finalized, additional AP comes in. We tried our best to capture the bigger pieces that were not included. So we go down, look at, the big one that's going to jump out at you is building inspection, which is about a third of the weight, or two-thirds of the way down from the total general government, where the budget was 1.7 million and only 576,000 spent to date for a variance of 1.1. If you recall, that's part of the EB project with additional speed, or additional review, construction review and inspections. That was put in over a three-year period. So that's why...
over a three-year period. So that's why you're going to see the big variance there. And then if you recall, in this year's budget, there was still an additional 900,000 or a million that we put in there, and we used out of surplus fund balance. So that's pretty much, this got captured into, rolled into the fund balance, and then will be pulled out into the 2021 budget. So that's what the big difference, the variance there is. And then the same with fire. We had $100,000 set aside for inspection services there, which have not occurred yet. So again, in this year's budget, that was handled the exact same way, the 100,000 put back in the budget and fund balance was used, as we did not use it in this current year. And then the final big one is the pay adjustment, and that's just kind of a placeholder that we have in the budget in case, for when contracts settle, if we need to reallocate to different departments, which we did not do. We didn't reallocate any of the pay adjustment line. That's why there's the 150,000 variance. So then at the very bottom, you see that the total general fund budget was 19.4. Year-to-date expenditures is just under 17 and a half, leaving the 1.9. Again, 1.9 is mostly that building inspection and the fire service variance that will roll into this year's, the 2021 budget.
Questions? Questions for Ron? Okay, carry on, that's it. Thank you, Ron, for sitting up for the presentation. That brings us, we addressed all action items on the first. That brings us to executive session. I need a motion, going to executive session pursuant to Connecticut General Sessions 2016 and 1x2109, to discuss union negotiations to include Council and HR, Abidazium, excuse me. Ron, you don't need to be for that. So, I need a motion for that?
Are we standing here?
Second?
Yes, we're going to stand here. We have a motion, a second, so we're in executive session. Well, we can't go to C8, because then we can't get distance.
Yeah, I know.
Who's second, please?
I did.
So what do I do about?
You can close the door.
Well, are you going to have business coming out of there?
No.
Okay, so you're just going to have to give me a moment to...
That's fine.
Okay, so, and you have now, you voted on the...
I'm turning over to you.
Yes.
I have... Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, we'll need to get doors.